So, welcome to Baltimore City Council's Ways and Means Committee. Today's hearing is now called to order. Today, we're here for a legislative oversight hearing, LO 21-03, Budget Briefing with the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. I am Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joining me today are, let's see here, Committee members, Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th District, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District, Councilman Kurnett from the 8th District, Councilman Isaac Yitzi Schleifer from the 5th District, Councilwoman Annie McCray from the 2nd District. And I believe that is everyone from the Committee. Representing Mayor Brandon Scott is Nina Themelis. Representing Council President Nick Mosby is Nikki Thompson and Matt Stagman. And the fabulous Martin Curran, who is staffed to the Committee and helps all of the trains run on time. Couple of quick ground rules before we begin. Please stay muted until you're recognized by the Chair. When you are not speaking, be sure to mute yourself. Identify yourself when you speak or before you speak. And please speak slowly and clearly. Again, after you are finished speaking, please mute yourself. Committee members and city agency officials are expected to keep their video on for the duration of the hearing unless there are technical issues preventing you from doing so. So, this hearing is a bit different than what we would normally do for an actual ordinance or a resolution. This is a legislative oversight hearing. Traditionally, we have not taken public testimony at budget hearings. We do have a larger forum to accept public testimony verbally. That will be in or around the May timeframe, probably mid to late May. We call that City Council Taxpayers Night. In addition to that, if you'd like to give feedback on the budget, you can do so for the Board of Estimates Taxpayers Night, which is usually in or around early April. The Board of Estimates is made up of the Mayor, Mayor Scott, as well as Acting Solicitor Jim Shea, Acting Public Works Director Matt Garbark, Council President Nick Mosby, and Comptroller Bill Henry. So, what we're going to do is we will start off, we usually do these quarterly. So, this is going to be the first one of this new term of the City Council. I'm going to turn it over to Bob Seneme in a minute, who is the Budget Director for the City within the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. I know Bob has a slide deck he's going to run through. And then, we will get to questions from Council members. So, with that, Bob, please take it away.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. This is Bob Seneme, Budget Director for the City of Finance.
Sorry to interrupt. If you could introduce everyone from your team that's with us today.
Sure.
I forgot to mention, we have, nope, that person is not on the call. Please go ahead, Bob. My apologies.
No problem. So, good morning, everybody. Thank you, Councilman. This is Bob Seneme, Budget Director in the Department of Finance, here to do our quarterly budget briefing on the second quarter projections today. We have three other folks from BBMR. Our Assistant Budget Directors are also on the call. Merrick Green, Pedro Aponte, and Aaron Moore are also joining me today. So, I will be, I'm going to go ahead and share this presentation, just if you could let me know when you see it. And then, we can get, go ahead and get rolling.
Good to go.
Okay. So, a little bit longer presentation than usual for these briefings today because we have a lot of material to go over. There's just a lot going on, of course, financially this year. And so, first, I want to show you the agenda for today of what I'd like to cover today. First, you know, I've been getting a lot of questions from folks about federal aid because there's been, you know, all these different packages, including one that's been proposed now. So, I thought it'd be worth it to go back over just a little primer on the different sources of federal aid we've gotten and how they've been spent. And then, next, I'll go into the detail on the second quarter projection and then talk a little bit more about revenue detail and expenditure detail and then wrap up with a summary of where we are. Reason I want to go through the federal aid is because it does integrate with the second quarter projection. We are getting some sources of aid which we've received and some which we're still waiting on. So, starting with the aid update. So, first, just a chronology of what we've gotten so far. The first chunk of aid that local governments got was what we call the CARES Act. So, that was the bill that was passed back in March of 2020. Out of that bill, we got $103 million of direct aid. And that bill also provided supplemental funds for disaster relief via FEMA, which we are applying for as we speak. There was also some additional supplemental funds that came out of that bill for CDBG and ESG, for example, supplemental money that went through those existing programs. The next big, big bill that passed Congress that affected us was what was called the Consolidated Appropriations Act. That was the one that was passed very late in December of 2020. That bill provided $17 million of rental relief for our program here in Baltimore City. But it did not provide any more state or local direct aid in that particular bill. It did, at the time, extend the deadline for the previous, for the CARES Act spending from December of 2020 to 2021. So, the money we were granted early in March through CARES had an original deadline of December 2020. This bill extended that deadline through the end of '21. And then, also, you know, there's a lot of talk right now about the, what's being referred to as the American Rescue Plan. This is the President Biden's proposal. It has not yet been enacted. Our understanding is that it would provide, his plan would provide additional unrestricted aid to state and local governments. You know, there is talk that he might try to get some, you know, Republican votes on this. The Senate Republicans, you know, met with the President last week, we saw, but their plan has no additional local aid in their bill. So, you know, our hope is that the President pushes through his plan with some kind of direct aid to state and local governments. There's also, wanted to mention a couple of state aid things that are in the mix as well. So, over the course of the pandemic, Governor Hogan has been providing some emergency economic relief within his authority. And the last piece of that was in December of 2020. There was an additional 3.9 million that was awarded to support, basically, bars and restaurants in the hospitality industry. What's not mentioned here is also, there was an additional 8 million for hotels in particular. And that's actually a separate pot of money and it's going to be administered by the city as well. And then, finally, there's a Relief Act that the Governor proposed. And again, the Relief Act is for, it's a bill, so it's not things that the Governor can do within his authority. One area of concern for that bill is that it would repeal state and local income taxes on unemployment benefits. So, you know, in today's world, unemployment benefits are taxable to the recipient. And because of that, the city and other local jurisdictions haven't seen an effect or much of an effect on our income tax. Because whereas before, if somebody had a job and we were drawing taxes off of their income, if the unemployment insurance replaced that income, but it was still taxable by state and local authorities, we didn't, we were still seeing some of that revenue come into the city. So, our income tax is the one area so far through the pandemic that has been a pleasant surprise that we haven't gotten hit as hard. This bill, as drafted, would repeal the local income tax on unemployment benefits. And the bill indicated that, the fiscal note indicated we could lose up to $22 million in fiscal '21 if that passes. The bill is going through the General Assembly right now. It was amended this week. It did pass the Senate, but the House has yet to act on it. So, we'll know a little bit more about this and what the effect is sometime, hopefully, next week. In terms of the rules for the different sources of funds, this is a note that shows, you know, side by side, CARES and FEMA. So, CARES was a direct award to the city. FEMA, on the other hand, is reimbursable. We have not received any FEMA aid yet. We have to apply for that and then we get checks in return. CARES does not require a city match. On FEMA, generally, the rule is that it's a 75% federal reimbursement with a 25% local match. There is a new executive order from President Biden, thank God, that is saying that there will be a 0% match back to the beginning of the pandemic and going forward, which would be, which would be good news for the city. The CARES Act deadline, like I mentioned, the original deadline was 2020. It was extended back to 2021. Whereas FEMA, there's no end date. But FEMA can close the disaster period at any time. So, they're treating the pandemic just like any other type of natural disaster and they can close the period at any time that they wish. And then, in terms of the eligibility, the one big outage, we think, with the CARES Act was that we could only spend the money on expenses. We were not allowed to use the money to backfill lost revenue, which is our primary problem right now. On the FEMA side, the rule is it just has to be used for emergency protective measures, which are defined by FEMA. And so, for FEMA, you know, in a natural disaster, you might think of FEMA, they pay for things like food distribution, sheltering for people that have lost their home, and medical care for people that have been injured. In the pandemic, they're treating it the same way, although those categories are just a little bit different in how we're using them during the pandemic. So, to go, just to show you more detail about how the money has been allocated. So, this is the CARES piece. So, we actually received the check back in March. Like I said, the December deadline, the 2020 deadline, you know, required us to move very quickly to either spend or allocate the money. And, you know, by the time Congress actually extended the bill to have the spending due by the end of 2021, we had already essentially either spent or allocated all the money. And so, we took the approach of first, covering at the bottom part, about quarters to three quarters of the money, went towards direct city response costs. You know, going through that, you see things like hazard pay, retrofitting some of our buildings, you know, Convention Center Hotel and other things, our solid waste collection, things that would impact the city's general fund. What we also decided to do is because we could not use the extra funds to backfill lost revenue, we did end up passing through some of the money into the community. You know, things like the eviction prevention, nonprofit support, and tourism support as an example of that. And so, at this point, it's fair to say that all this money has either been spent or allocated at this point. And we're just in the process of spending down the last remaining dollars. On the FEMA side, we have, we have $61.9 million of accumulated costs at this point. These are costs that the city has paid, but that we expect to be reimbursed for through FEMA. So, again, FEMA is reimbursable. We haven't received anything yet. We have taken the approach of prioritizing the applications for the more expensive projects here. And so, you can see in the status column, we have submitted for FEMA reimbursement already some of the food distribution program that was going on through Salvation Army, Meals on Wheels, and Eating Together. We are very close to being able to submit also now applications for some of the sheltering projects, so some of the hotels, and also some additional food distribution costs. Once we get that in, we're also being told that for any vaccination sites that the city sets up, that we will also be eligible for 100% reimbursement for that with 50% of the cash comes upfront, which would be great news for the city. And so, we're working on a plan for the city's vaccination site, trying to get a budget submitted to FEMA so that we can access that money right away. I can say, generally, there's been a huge change. You know, the change in administration at the presidential level has been, you know, so far, it looks like it's going to certainly be in the city's favor with these executive orders. And it seems like the mission of the federal government now is to try to get the money out through these eligible programs as quickly as possible. So, those are the two big buckets of aid that we're getting. And now, I want to show you how this is integrating with our second quarter projection. So, first, let me explain what this does and does not include. So, our projection at this point, I'm excluding from these numbers the CARES Act, both the revenues and the expenses. And the reason for that is, think of that as a grant. We got the money, we got the check for that. We charged a bunch of things that we've already spent into that CARES Act. And we'll have to report that to the federal government. I am showing in this projection the cost for the programs that we will expect to be reimbursed through by FEMA. And the reason I'm showing it here is that the general fund is covering those costs in the meantime. So, the general fund is fronting the money for those programs while the city seeks reimbursement. And that is one of the reasons why we're showing here in the second quarter, we're showing a $59 million deficit versus our adopted budget. And to summarize that, on the revenue side, we are over $30 million worse even than our adopted budget in fiscal 2021. And I'll go into more detail later about how bad the revenue picture is, but it is, it's very bad. I mean, we wrote down, before we passed the fiscal '21 budget, we made a large adjustment. We made an adjustment of over $100 million down on revenue to reflect the fact that we expected our revenues to be slow and stagnant through the first quarter or two of fiscal 2021. Now, what we're seeing is the longer the pandemic lasts, we're seeing additional losses of revenue even beyond what we had projected in the budget. On the expenditure side, most of the overspending that you're seeing there in that $1.96 billion, a big chunk of that is the FEMA cost that we are paying for and that we project to continue through the end of this fiscal year. So, again, some of that, we believe, will be reimbursed this year and will help to close, close the gap. You know, one scenario is that if we were to get about half of our reimbursement this year, we would end with a net deficit of only $22.1 million rather than a $59 million shortfall. If we were fortunate enough to get everything reimbursed by the end of fiscal '21, we would still have a small net general fund deficit. And that is because, again, our revenues have fallen even short of our projections so far for fiscal 2021. So, before we get into the detail, just in a very big picture, the takeaway from this is, you know, revenue is falling short of projections and the city is fronting money for FEMA programs that we expect to be reimbursed for by FEMA. And those big ones are the food distribution and the hoteling in particular. In terms of how we would close fiscal year 2021, if we do fall short, which looks likely at this point, you know, the rainy day fund is, again, our backstop. The charter requires us to end the year with the general fund in balance. We are not allowed to borrow money to close that gap. So, because the charter is very restrictive for us and like it is for many local governments and state governments that we have to be balanced at the end of the year, we had many years ago created, about two decades ago, created the rainy day fund. And I've gotten in the habit of making contributions to that every year, really for the sole purpose of avoiding or being able to handle a situation like we have now with COVID. Any drawdown that we do make from the rainy day fund requires us to be paid back, to pay it back within five years per the policy. And again, we think that's a good rule because we wouldn't want to have to draw down resources and then leave a future administration short if we came into an emergency in the future. So, you know, the backstop for fiscal '21, again, is the rainy day fund. We have about $139 million, I'm sorry, $138 million in the fund right now. And notice that there was a decline in fiscal '20. That's because we ultimately had to use $8 million to close out the fiscal 2020 budget. And again, it's very likely that in '21, we'll have to use some level of rainy day fund to close the budget while we wait for and hope for that FEMA reimbursement. So, going into more detail on the revenue side, I want to show you, really, two graphs that really just kind of sum up the situation. The first is parking revenues. This is our monthly parking revenue in our four main buckets of parking revenue. So, parking tax, which is on private parking facilities or garages, parking meters, which, of course, are fed in some of our more high-demand neighborhoods, garage income, which is city-owned garages, the income that folks pay to park in those facilities, and then, any parking fines or penalties. And you'll notice that even as recently as December, January, and February, December of '19 and into January and February of 2020, even during those winter months, pre-pandemic, we were still bringing in, you know, $6 to $8 million worth of revenue. And, you know, the winter months are usually a little bit quieter for parking garages where it picks up in the summer. And then, ever since that point where we hit the pandemic in March, you can see it's been a steady decline. And now, we're at a point where we're averaging only a little bit more than $2 million per month in parking revenue. So, we're getting, we're just getting crushed on parking revenue. And I don't think, at this point, that some of this revenue is going to return. And I think, at this point, a lot of it is, is going to be a recurring loss, unfortunately. And then, the second graph, to give you an idea of the challenges we're facing, is hotel tax. So, again, you know, hotel tax usually peaks in the summer and it stays high even into the fall, into the late fall. So, you can see, like, November of '19 was still, before the pandemic, was still a strong month. Over 60% occupancy and over $5 million collected in hotel tax just for that month. And then, we started to see a little bit of a decline in the winter, which is typical. We have less people here staying overnight in the winter. But once we got to March during the pandemic, you can see, we've been under $1 million of collections for the last, the last nine months, 10 months, actually. And our occupancy rate has been hovering around 30% to 35% or even lower at times. In a normal summer, you would see a peak again in those June, July, August months. And you would see occupancy up around 60% to 65%, sometimes even as high as 70%. But what we've seen during the pandemic is just a real slow receipts and income tax. And if you, if you average only about $1 million per month, that would be 12 million per year. Whereas, in a normal year, we'd be bringing in 30 million plus of hotel tax revenue. And so, when I show you, what I'm showing you here is our key revenue sources versus the adopted budget. And again, I can't overstate how bad the parking situation is. We're just, we're just shedding parking revenue. The parking, the parking revenue, what's, what's most alarming about this to me is that for the '21 budget, we actually wrote down parking revenue, thinking that we were being pretty aggressive, bringing those numbers down to make sure that we could hit those. And we actually wrote back, I'm looking at my notes here, we had written down parking revenue for the fiscal '21 budget by over $14 million. And even with that write-down, we're coming in $30 million below that because of just the, the, just the entire elimination of almost all of those revenue streams. The same is true of hotel tax. So, in the '21 budget, we wrote hotel tax down by 8 million and we're still coming in $9.5 million short of our hotel tax. We're also coming in a little bit short on things like sheriff district court fees because some of our courts are closed. A little bit lower on admissions tax and convention center. Again, that's related to the tourism industry. And we're coming in a little bit short on personal property tax and earnings on investment. Again, on personal property tax, fewer businesses with fewer, you know, fixed assets to report that are taxable and earnings on investment because interest rates are so low. So, you know, when I look at this versus the second quarter, the bad news is, is that COVID has actually been even worse than we expected on the tourism and parking revenues. The good news, at least so far, is that the items on the far side, the, 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 the far right of this chart, transfer and recreation taxes have been stronger than expected. So, we wrote that down under the expectation that people, you know, losing their jobs and not having as much income would be on the sidelines of the housing market. But the housing market has actually been very strong. Also, interest rates are rock bottom right now. And so, there has been a lot of activity in the housing market. What we've seen in the housing market transactionally is that there's a lot going on in the residential market especially. It looks like one of the early trends of this pandemic is that people are trying to upgrade and purchase, you know, more space if they can afford it, knowing that they're going to be working from home maybe for a long time. Commercial property transactions have been slower, though. And then, on camera violations, we're also coming in above budget by about $10 million. And the reason for that is that in the early stages of the pandemic, we had fewer traffic, much less traffic on the roads. But we found that people were actually violating, we're actually violating the law more often with less traffic. We saw more speeding. We saw more people blowing through red lights or just turning right on red when it was, when it was illegal. And now that there's more traffic back on the roads, we're starting to see those camera violations start to kind of come down a little bit. But we did actually get a spike in the very early stages of the pandemic and into fiscal '21 because there was a change of behavior and there was less compliance with traffic, traffic laws. We were, we were surprised by that. I mean, from a, from a revenue standpoint, we were, you know, pleasantly surprised that that was helping. But of course, we don't want people, you know, partaking in dangerous activity. But that was a trend we saw, not only here, but we read a little bit in talking with our DOT partners that other jurisdictions, other states were seeing that same trend. On the expenditure side of the budget, it's also a really complicated and ugly picture. And most of this, what I'm going to show you is because we have agencies that are spending on programs that we expect to be reimbursed for, either through CARES or FEMA. The CARES programs, we already have the money. The FEMA, we will be asking for reimbursement for that money. So, there are a lot of agencies that I'm going to show you here that are projected in deficit. But most of those will be covered by federal aid. And at the end of this year, we will again have to ask for a package of supplemental or transfer bills to close out these agencies in balance, you know, when we come back after the end of the third quarter. So, I want to start with the agencies that have, you know, deficits and spending that is, in my mind, is okay because we will cover these with federal aid. So, police has hazard pay that they can charge to CARES. Health has, you know, testing costs, contact tracing costs, vaccination costs, sheltering, PPE and feeding, most of which, almost all of that will be reimbursed, we believe, by FEMA. And then, MOCFS was allocated $10 million out of CARES for the rental relief program. They also got some separate sources of money from other funds, but they have a $10 million deficit in the general fund, which will be corrected by the CARES Act money. FIRE also has hazard pay costs. Public Works has some supplemental personnel contracts that they've been using to support solid waste collection and recycling. And again, these are, when we had people sick, we had to use some staffing contracts to support those costs. Those, some of those costs, we believe most of those costs will be reimbursable through federal aid. Planning was providing support for the Emergency Food Distribution Program. And General Services was also supporting the food distribution program and still is. And also did some, is doing some more deeper cleaning and decontamination of city, city buildings so that we keep our folks safe. There are a couple of agencies. There's five that have deficit right now that are not going to be eligible for federal aid. And I wanted to make folks aware of these now. Again, this is a projection based on the second quarter. So, this could change before the end of the year. But these are the five that we expect at this point. There's two more on the, on the next page I'll get to. So, first, the Police Department. We're projecting a $9.7 million shortfall in costs that is not covered by federal aid. And there's really three reasons for that. One is their overtime spending. You know, the council reduced their budget even beyond what we had proposed to the, to the council in the fiscal '21 budget. And, you know, we felt that those cuts were overly aggressive. To meet that, to meet those targets, the Police Department would have had to be spending $1 million per pay period on overtime. They're averaging about $1.1 to $1.2 million of spending per pay period. I want to just highlight, the reduction in overtime spending over the last two years is extraordinary. They've done really a terrific job. We were averaging $50 million a year. This year, they're on track to spend maybe 30. And so, even though they're falling short here, I think it doesn't do justice to the progress that they've made in kind of bringing these costs under, under control. But versus the final council adopted budget, it is a little bit short of that budgeted amount. The second item is that police, we budgeted, if you remember, across all agencies for a pay freeze. So, across all unions, all agencies, we budgeted for flat pay. We budgeted that in police as well. Police had a signed contract that guaranteed 3% wages. We did ask the police unions to forego that, that raise. They did not, they decided not to. Ultimately, the city decided not to take further action because we're so short of police officers that we didn't want to do layoffs or do anything that would kind of jeopardize our progress there. And so, the Police Department was budgeted for a pay freeze, but it wasn't realized because they had a signed contract before the end of that fiscal year. And then, the final item is the Mounted Unit. So, if you remember, in the proposed budget last year, So if you remember, in the proposed budget last year, we had made the mounted unit an on-call function. We had moved all the personnel back into other functions in police. Um, the council made an additional cut to the budget that actually wiped the unit out completely. Uh, what was eventually decided is was we still wanted to have that unit just in case, uh, in an on-call posture, just in case we needed those, those animals and those facilities. So there are some rental costs for the stable and animal care, uh, positions that we're still funding, that we're still paying for, um, that is beyond what was in that final adopted budget. On the fire side, um, we had proposed in the budget to eliminate two suppression companies. Um, ultimately the mayor decided, the previous administration had decided not to act on this. And the reason for that is that the fire department is undergoing an operational study right now. They have a private, uh, consultant coming in, looking at the entire department. And what was agreed to internally was that we would just wait for the results of that uh, study to be complete before we take any dramatic action on fire. Um, I still expect that if, when that study comes, comes back, it's still going to see us as being, uh, you know, more likely to save on the suppression side than the EMS side. But the decision was made internal is to just pause and wait for those results. So there is a deficit, um, in fire that is not covered by federal aid. Uh, the third, uh, agency is the convention center hotel. So with the hotel, um, the Hilton Hotel was financed by the city, um, uh, many years ago. And the operational revenue from the hotel helps to make the debt service payments. Unfortunately, right now the hotel is closed, just like all other hotels or like other, some other hotels in the region because of COVID-19. Uh, the original financing agreement that we had for that, for those bonds requires the city to dip into the general fund up to $7 million to make debt service payments. And based on the fact that the convention center hotel is essentially closed, uh, for the immediate future, we believe we will need that full $7 million in fiscal 21, uh, to meet our, to, to, uh, to meet our commitment. We did budget, uh, some money for this in fiscal 21. We budgeted four and a half million, but again, it looks like we're going to need the full seven, uh, which means we will have to ask for an appropriation for this agency as well. Uh, the final two, so on finance, um, we have been paying for some temporary staffing contracts to support the workday project. So those were costs that were above, uh, what we had budgeted for, uh, for the workday project. And again, we've had a little bit more support, uh, required over the last couple of weeks with, uh, implementation of phase one. And then in public works, there's about $4.2 million of costs that we don't believe will be covered by federal aid. Uh, one is because we converted, um, 37 seasonal maintenance aides to permanent employees, which was a net cost that was not budgeted for. Uh, and we've also seen just a little bit higher disposal costs. Uh, we're seeing higher volumes of trash and, and recycling this year during the pandemic with more people at home. So I would expect at the end of this year that we would come back with supplementals for all of these items. And again, many of them will be covered by federal aid, but some of them, them are not. And anything that's not, we will need to dip into reserves to, to close the budget for this year. We do have some agencies, on the other hand, that are projecting small surpluses, and I've listed them here. Uh, what we're seeing so far is that during COVID, there have been some agencies, especially agencies that do seasonal work. Um, or if they do work where they are affected with either their unit or something in their unit is closed because of COVID-19, that we're, we're seeing them spend a little bit less. And, you know, a couple of good examples of that, recreation parks is seasonal. They usually bring on in the spring and in the summer, they bring on, uh, help for rec centers and help for pools. You know, with those facilities, um, either closed or partially closed, uh, we had less of a need to bring on people for temporary work. Uh, same is true of convention center, they'll bring on some temporary folks for either security or landscaping and things of that sort around the, the convention center in the high visibility months. Uh, we did not need them this year. And then, um, state's attorney, an example, with a court system being closed, uh, again, just less need for additional personnel costs there and overtime. So that's the, uh, the, the overall picture. And just to summarize in terms of the takeaways, I, I really narrow it down to just five key points. Um, one, our general fund revenue is down even beyond what we projected in fiscal 21, uh, which was written down, we thought pretty aggressively given the COVID situation. So this COVID situation has just lasted longer than even we could have anticipated when the budget was passed. Um, second is, we do feel comfortable that federal aid will cover, um, most of the COVID relating, related spending, especially in health, uh, and also in places like fire, police and DPW. A lot of our frontline line work, it, it will be reimbursed if it was pandemic related. Um, our end of year general fund position is going to be totally driven by what we get from FEMA. That's highly unpredictable. As I showed you earlier, we've submitted three of the big projects to FEMA already, and we're close to, to, um, submitting the next batch of those. Uh, generally it takes a month for those to be reviewed by FEMA for them to go them through your documentation and get approval to send you the final, uh, us, the city, the final check. We have Ernst &amp; Young on contract supporting us with that work, um, which is helping. They've been helping us navigate the rules and get the documentation in order so that we can submit uh, good applications and to ensure we get most of that money back. But that is unpredictable, um, in, in terms of when we get the money. Uh, fourth is that even if we get all of the reimbursement back, uh, we would still end with a deficit. So, you know, our guidance to, to everybody in this, in, in the city has been, we still need to be ultra cautious. Um, you know, we have a hiring freeze that's still in effect. We're only hiring absolutely critical positions, uh, uh, for either executive level positions or frontline positions at this point. Uh, if it's not absolutely necessary at this point, we're, we're denying those requests. And then fifth and finally is that the rainy day fund, um, still has a healthy balance and that will provide a backstop for us if we can't get totally balanced by the end of the year. What I foresee happening is that we'll need to use some rainy day fund at the end of the year. But then when we eventually get reimbursed by FEMA for those costs, we can replenish, uh, the rainy day fund. So, uh, that's where we are. It's a, it's an ugly picture in a lot of ways, but we also feel comfortable that we were, you know, prepared as best we could financially for some kind of, you know, really extreme situation like COVID-19. Um, so I'm happy to pause here and, and turn it over back to you, councilman, uh, for any questions that you or the committee have.
Thank you, Bob. Two things, colleagues. One, in the past, we have done, uh, last council term, we did a rolling resolution, uh, for these hearings. Uh, we're not going to do that, uh, this council term. We're just going to use, uh, the legislative oversight function to call these hearings on a quarterly basis, uh, and more frequently, uh, as needed. Um, second, uh, we're going to do two questions, uh, for council member. Bob, the rainy day fund, um, the BOE authorized 25 million, uh, back in September. We had at the time, I think our, your end deficit for fiscal 20 was 14.3 million, plus or minus. Uh, you had, you had mentioned that we used 8 million. Uh, can you rock us through the gap between the 14.3 and the eight? And if any action is necessary in order to restrict any more rainy day funding from being used this fiscal year, or if that's even possible?
Yeah, so, um, so you're, you're correct. We ended with a $14 million, uh, deficit in fiscal 20 when I last presented. Um, we asked the board for, uh, authority, uh, up to 25, just in case there were any adjustments. And it actually came in, uh, better in our favor. The reason for that was, we sometimes will receive additional revenue in July and August that was actually supposed to be for the last fiscal year for June. And that happened this year. Um, and the accounting rules allow us to, to take some of the money, uh, from, if we receive something in July or August that was really supposed to be, uh, paid in June or May in the past fiscal year, we can, we can count it, uh, towards last year. And that's what happens this year. So we came in with a $14 million deficit. We ended up with 6 million of additional revenue that we could count towards fiscal 20. Uh, most of it, if I'm remembering, was highway user revenue. Uh, and so that brought the net deficit down to about $8 million. We still use the 8 million, uh, to, and we had to use that 8 million to close fiscal 2020 imbalance.
Thank you. Second item on, um, slides 11 and 12, you, uh, you talked about the 68.3 million dollar deficit as of second quarter. Um, I, I think there were two different figures in terms of, you had a conservative and a, and a more liberal estimate in terms of what FEMA would reimburse. Can you talk through why, why you had those two different estimates and how that works?
Yeah, so the fir-, first thing would be, we've got about
And Bob, Bob, can you pull up, can you pull up slides 11 and 12? And also I want to acknowledge or recognize, uh, Councilman Mark Conway from the 4th District. Thank you.
Sure. Let me just go back to that one. Um, I think these, these are the two you're talking about. So we have, so we have at this point about $61 million worth of costs that we believe will be reimbursed, reimbursed. And, you know, Ernst &amp; Young has told us, you know, even in a good situation, some of those costs will be thrown out by FEMA because the documentation won't be, be perfect. Or there's something that we're including that we'll find out is not eligible. So just to be safe, we took 55.8 million dollars and said, okay, let's, let's see if we got half of this reimbursed. And we've, we've at, we've applied for roughly half of the, of the, uh, funding now per our application. So if we were to get half of that back before the end of fiscal 21, we would bring in 27.9 million dollars of additional revenue, which I'm showing here, which would reduce the deficit to 22.1 million. If we were to get that full 55.8 million, um, that would bring the deficit down to, to 3.2 million. And so even if we get all of the FEMA reimbursement in 2021, we would still be just a little bit short.
Got it. So that 50% is, is, um, arbitrary, if you will. That's just kind of a, a discussion point, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a guess. I mean, I feel like it's more likely that we'll get about half of it than we get all of it, just because it takes a while. You know, our, our Ernst &amp; Young team has guided us and said, look, if you, the ones we've applied for, we likely have a good chance of getting that before the end of the fiscal year. But, um, because it takes sometimes months to get reimbursed for this buck. So I feel pretty good that we'll get some of the money, but I doubt that we'll get all of it before the end of the year.
And that's fine that it's arbitrary. Just wanted to understand the methodology behind the projection. Um, all right, you can, uh, if you could take that down, Bob. And we will go to Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bob, you spoke about 1.8 million dollars, um, for workday temporary staffing contracts for workday support. Can you go into more detail or can someone from your team go into more detail about exactly what we're paying the 1.8 million dollars for?
Sure. So, um, you know, we have brought on during the, uh, the, the workday project this year as we were getting ready for implementation, um, there were additional, uh, support personnel brought in to help with, uh, both the implementation and then some of the things we found, uh, in the first couple of weeks of the implementation. So I don't have the kind of person by person detail with me, but I know there's a hearing. Uh, I think it's later this week on Wednesday, where we'll kind of be reporting on what some of the issues have been and what those costs have been. But I can get you the exact detail if you'd like in terms of actual support person and what contract we paid it to. But I don't have that right in front of me at the moment.
Thank you. Can, can we make sure that it is furnished to the committee?
Sure.
Thank you.
Bob, if you could also send over this, uh, presentation to, to Marguerite as well.
Yeah, we will.
If, if you haven't already, thank you. Councilwoman, you good?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Bob, on that page, uh, where we, you had the federal aid rules comparison with CARES and FEMA. Um, just kind of going down the list with, I, I see we're getting, are we, so we, we already, we already received 103.1 million. Are we getting that?
We, we have, yeah, we've received that money already. We got that money back in, in March. And, and so, yeah, basically all the things that you see on the CARES Act page, we've already charged most of those costs to that CARES Act money. So.
So did a lot of that go to the health department?
So at not, actually no, because what, what we found when we were trying to figure out what aid would cover what, is that most of the health support costs are actually more reimbursable or better reimbursed through FEMA, because some of it is medical care, um, some of it is things like testing and contact tracing. Uh, some of it is things like, you know, just PPE, um, that was, we thought would be reimbursed through FEMA. So there was, um, there was some small cost were supported by CARES for the health department, but most of the health department costs at this point, we believe will be reimbursed by FEMA. And so those have not been paid for yet, but we're affronting those costs. We're paying for some of those costs now.
Um, so I know that, um, the health department's going to be, um, putting out mobile units to go to some of these impoverished areas for seniors in particular that, um, you know, have transportation issues. Are those mobile? Is, is that part of CARE or FEMA?
I believe that is part of, I believe that will be part of FEMA.
Okay. Okay.
So yeah, broad, broadly FEMA provides medical care. And, you know, you think of it in like a natural disaster, if there's people injured, they reimburse the local government if they're providing some care to people that are hurt. Here they're defining the pandemic as a, a, a big emergency, you know, a natural disaster essentially. So a lot of those medical response costs will, we believe will be reimbursable.
And then just lastly, how is our infrastructure going, you know, with that federal mandate that we have for our city? How is that moving along as far as financially?
Um, are you referring to the, more the consent decree, like on the?
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I would have to, you know, check in with DPW on, on that. I mean, I know they're still doing, you know, the pandemic hasn't changed, you know, some of those requirements they're still doing. I mean, they've been borrowing, you know, tens of millions of dollars a year to make up for, uh, to make those infrastructure improvements. But I would have to get an update from DPW. I'm not close to that on a day-to-day basis. It's more, you know, kind of quarterly or annual updates that I hear from them. So. But they're still doing that work that's still relevant. What we're showing here is just the general fund. So we'd have to get, you know, DPW to update on the utility fund specifically.
Okay. I think it's important if we get that update, especially since we're, um, I guess they're preparing to, um, uh, put out for the new, uh, leader of that agency.
That's true.
You know, kind of what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, Councilman Stokes, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, uh, for federal money that already been allocated, can you give a report to where that money actually was spent? And who received it? One. Two is, uh, Councilman Costello, I'm going to thank you and Shalonda Stokes for that boost program to really help, um, the African-American black business here in Baltimore. We know all our businesses are suffering. Can you also give us the report of how many, how many black-owned, black business received some of that, um, federal money? In my district, a young lady had a, a beauty salon. And because she didn't have a working relationship with Bank of America, when she filed for some of that money, they told her she could not receive none because she never had a working relationship with, um, Bank of America. So I'm curious to how many black-owned businesses were able to qualify for some of that federal money? Can you get that report back to the committee too? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. So, um, councilmen, so on the CARES Act money that was distributed, uh, to the community, um, each of the pots are being, were being managed by, um, different agencies. So for example, the small business support was being managed by BDC. Um, the nonprofit support was being managed by Civic Foundation, the, the Baltimore Civic Foundation. So we can, we can gather some, some of that information on the grants that were made. I don't have the, the details that you, you would ask for in terms of the types of businesses and what businesses, but we can certainly coordinate with them, um, and, and provide that information back to the committee.
Hey Bob, real quick, if you could just send me those agency that receive money, then I can request it myself, if, if that's possible.
Okay.
Mr. Moore was giving me say something.
Okay, we can do that.
And the black business that receive some of the CARES, some of the federal money also, I need that report. Also, not just for me, but for the committee. Thank you.
Okay.
Bob, if you could add- Bob, if you could add that to the list, please, for the committee and get that over to Marguerite. All right, Councilman Schleifer, you have anything? Councilman Burnett, you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bob, at the, I missed the, at the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned that there was legislative action being taken at the General, in the General Assembly that would impact income tax revenues. Can you, can you revisit that? I caught some of it, but I started having some technical issues. I know you said there was a, could be a $20 million impact. Is that this year or is that, can you expand a little bit on, on that and how that would impact the budget?
Sure, so what the, so what was proposed by the governors, they're calling it the Relief Act and Governor Hogan's bill, and it's being considered now by the General Assembly. So one of the, so backing up before that, one of the things that, what has protected the city's income tax, especially born during the pandemic, is that unemployment insurance to somebody who receives it is taxable. And so if I have a job and I lose my job and I apply for unemployment, when I get that employment check, though, that check is taxable by state, by state and local authorities. You know, before that, if I have a job, of course, my income is taxable by state and local authorities. So what the, the fact that the unemployment insurance is taxable has meant that even as we've seen many people lose their jobs during this pandemic, is it because they're getting replacement income either through the state or federal government that we're still getting the tax revenue from that? The concern about the Relief Act is that what the governor proposed was that he would make the unemployment benefits not taxable. And I think the reason for that, I'm sure, is well intended in that you want to have the biggest, you know, check that possible for somebody who's receiving unemployment. But the downside of that is that if that provision stays in the bill, that we would lose our ability to tax unemployment benefits. And that's, you know, has been a growing part of our income tax base now during the pandemic as the unemployment rate has risen. So, you know, we gave our feedback to MOGR, our team that's down in Annapolis, and that feedback was kind of given to our, our folks down there. There were some amendments this week I saw that the Senate put onto the bill. I'm not sure where it shook out yet, but you know, most local governments were kind of giving the feedback of like, hey, that unemployment insurance being taxable is helping us kind of stay afloat during the pandemic. And the number that I cited for you, that was actually the DLS report, fiscal note from, from the folks in Annapolis of what it would affect in, in terms of local jurisdiction. That was the number for Baltimore. It's a temporary, the way it was proposed, proposed as a temporary provision. So most of it would hit in '21. There would be some effect in fiscal '22 and it would end and it would go back to being taxable. I don't know what the exact date was, but I believe it was a finite period of time. But during that period of time, there would be that impact to our local, our revenues. Does that, does that help explain it?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. I think we have gone through all the committee members. Councilman Conway, did you have anything?
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Committee members, are there any other questions? All right, I've got about nine questions, so I'm just going to keep going. If someone has questions, in the meantime, I want to adhere to the two question rule. So I'm just going to assume there's not questions unless I'm interrupted. So please, after the second question, feel free to put your raise hand function in the chat window there and Marguerite will let me know and I'll stop and defer to other council members. Bob, for the benefit of the committee, can you, I know you spent some time talking about parking revenues. Can you talk about the workflow, if you will, of funds for the Parking Enterprise Utility Fund and the Parking Management Fund? And how that works and how that ends up impacting the general fund at the end of the day?
Sure, so the way, the way the parking funds are set up is that all of the revenue that we receive from all of those sources that I mentioned, the garage income, the parking tax, parking meters, it all first pays for parking related expenses. So that would be the Parking Authority, the debt service on the garages, some of the enforcement, some of the people that are out and doing the enforcement. And then once that revenue pays for all the expenses, that net revenue flows directly to the general fund. In a normal year, in a good pre-pandemic year, we would net after expenses 30 million or more in the general fund from parking. But because we're doing so poorly right now, it's actually at the moment it's reversed. The general fund is actually supporting some of those parking expenses. So, and yeah, normally the flow is that those parking revenues, you know, after the expenses comes into the general fund.
Can you, can you go a little bit more into the, the difference between the two enterprise funds related to parking? And just give a little more detail on that, please?
Yeah, so the, the Parking Enterprise Fund was set up specifically for the garages. And so most of the debt service costs are in the garages. And that money flows into what we call the Parking Management Fund, which is where most of the enforcement personnel are. And then any remaining revenues come to the general fund. You know, it's kind of, it's weird that we have two. We probably could combine that at some point into one fund, I believe, because all of it is parking related. But the way it was set up historically was Parking Enterprise Fund first with the majority of the debt service costs to make sure that we can pay off the debt service on the garages that were built with borrowed money. And then it flows through to Parking Enforcement and then all the additional revenue comes into the general fund. So it's kind of like a waterfall, it's kind of like a two tiered waterfall. But in simple terms, it's all parking revenue, net out all parking expenses and then come to the general fund.
Thank you, Bob. I had a question on the FEMA reimbursement. I think you already answered this, but when is that expected? I, I think you said it's, it's pretty unpredictable.
It's unpredictable, you know, our guidance we've heard is it can take three to four months from the time that you actually apply. I've been through the process before, take your application. FEMA will generally send a representative either in person or through the phone to, to go through your documentation and ask questions and, you know, throw things out if they think it's ineligible. We're hoping that with the current administration, that they're trying to be a little bit more aggressive and get the money out the door. So we're hopeful that it will be quicker, but you know, you can't promise anything when we're dealing with the federal government. So three to four months on average, but not sure during this term.
Got it. Bob, in light of the Kerwin override in the House, I think yesterday, I'm not sure that that action is complete, I think it requires Senate override as well.
Yeah.
Where does that put the city in terms of commitments for fiscal year '22?
So for '22, what we've been told is that if the bill, if Kerwin is overridden, that there will likely be a provision that will buy at least a year. So our commitment wouldn't start until '23. So for '22, we wouldn't have the Kerwin issues, but that would start up in, in 2023. And those are, you know, like I've told people, those are big numbers. Those are, you know, significant commitments that we would, we would be responsible for. But it looks like at this point, even if it's overridden, we think there will be some kind of provision to pause it at least for the first fiscal year.
Okay, so in, in summary, the override does not specifically impact just our fiscal '22 outlook, correct?
Right.
Okay. All right. In terms of the, the HOT, or the Hotel Occupancy Tax, just curious, is Lord Baltimore, I think they've been, I think we have spent about $4.6 million with them in terms of housing our, our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness or other issues related to COVID.
Right.
Are they paying the HOT on the money that the city is spending with them?
That, that, I'm not sure. I'll need to check how we, how we structure that contract. I don't know offhand. I believe the answer is no, but let me just check.
Okay, yeah, if you could circle back with us. We've also been joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey, a member of the committee from the 3rd District. Councilman, we're, everyone else on the committee and other council members have asked their questions. So I had about nine questions at the end. So please, if you have any questions, tell me to stop. I want to make sure I'm adhering to the two question rule. Do you have anything, Councilman?
The first thing that's on my mind is whether, and I apologize the way I had, I'm done wrong. I resent the committee. I, first thing that's on my mind is just in general, have we raised the concern about updating performance metrics for the next budget in order to have things, to be planning for metrics that matter in ways that the metrics have seemed to be of little relevance in past budgets? And I guess just for the committee, when, when, I feel like this hearing is just to spring that is not really, this is not the right way to do it, but I just wanted to raise that as a, as a concern that I know has come up in budget hearing after hearing, year after year. And I'd hope that we can address that at some point. And I'd like to hear from BBMR how they might see an ability to facilitate that so that we're not facing the same problem this coming fiscal budget and the one after that, you know, looking ahead to correct this problem.
So the, the performance measures that we publish in the, the budget book, they were developed, you know, over a long period of time. BBMR was a facilitator of those, but they were developed with City Stat and with agency input, of course. We did a big refresh of that about two years ago in the prior administration where City Stat and BBMR worked with agencies to update those measures and make sure that all parties were in agreement on them. I would acknowledge that there are some that are not great or that could be improved. But our practice at this point, we haven't really decided yet with the new administration how we're going to, you know, attack that since we're still in a, what I would call an emergency situation with COVID. So it's something that we will discuss with, you know, the new city administrator and City Stat about what our, our plan is going forward. But generally, our practice has been we do one big refresh with everybody like we did a couple of years ago. And then agencies are welcome to submit improvements or changes and we review those with the agency. So we actually just had a couple revisions to like health measures. Trying to think, a couple of other agencies have come to us and say, hey, can we update these measures? And we'll review them together and try to get joint approval on those. But I, but at the moment, there's not like a, a planned total revision right now since we're in this emergency.
So, okay, so in general, this is kind of a process that exists between BBMR, the mayor's office, and these city agencies. It sounds like, whereas I guess our role here, when it comes to us being able to ask questions and evaluate the budget, this is a, this is a fundamental part of how we have to see the budget and evaluate it. And it's, it's one of the only things that's published in the budget that we can use as, as metrics to evaluate how we think, how well we think the money is budgeted and how well it's performing. It seems like it should be pretty critical for us to have some say in how those metrics, you know, what those metrics are. So I just, I wanted to raise that at this earliest opportunity with this committee, Mr. Chair. And there's nothing else that's on my mind at the moment.
Thank you, Councilman, I share your concerns. You know, Bob, this has been an ongoing dialogue that you and I have been engaged in for a number of years now. There are a number of, of metrics which are not effective indicators in terms of how effective city government is operating. For example, the one I always bring up is the number of calls that 311 takes. That is not an effective metric, that is their baseline job. You know, we should be thinking about reporting, you know, the number of, the amount of time it takes for a 311 call to be, or a service request to be resolved or closed out. The percentage of 311 complaints that are, or service requests that are closed out. How many of those have a subsequent citizen complaint because it's not actually closed out? What is the wait time to get through on a 311 phone call, et cetera? Anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would just say, I would, I would just say, you know, we, we do the best we can to coordinate that. That was not something that we even put in the budget books even just a few years ago. So we'll, we'll do our best on that, but it is a joint, it's not just BBMR, it's a joint effort between, you know, mayor's office, City Stat, and, and the agencies. We do take the feedback from, that comes out of the council hearings. Actually, we had a meeting last week with DOT to discuss some of that, some of those measures. We do take the feedback seriously for sure and go over those if we get it from, from council members.
I certainly appreciate that and I, I know that you take our feedback seriously. I think maybe we need to elevate or escalate the, the dialogue to engage with the mayor's office directly on this. We certainly recognize that this is not just on BBMR, but this is our main forum for providing you feedback on the budget and you are always on the opposite end of that. We, we don't necessarily have all the agencies here, we could call them in, but. All right, so we'll, Councilman Dorsey, we'll, we'll continue to talk about that offline and figure out the, and we'll work closely with the council president's office to figure out the best way to move that, that conversation forward. Bob, can you bring up the slide on the hotel? On the hotels with, please?
Sure. The hotel tax.
Yeah, yep. The HOT versus occupancy. Yeah, 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 perfect. How does this compare to the previous 12 month or 13 month period, 14 month period? Just off the top?
So you would usually see, you know, you would usually see occupancy peak in the summer months at about, you know, 60% or above. So think of like those April, May, June, July, August months are generally the, the hottest in terms of hotel tax. So during those times, you would be bringing in, you know, four to five million dollars at least per month and the occupancy would be up in the 60% range. Where we really got crushed this year was during, you know, those months, March, April, May, June, that, that first wave where it was really low. You know, you'd usually see the orange line up around 60% or so in those months and then tailing off a little bit into the winter.
Bob, for the benefit of the committee, can you explain the detail behind the 40-60 split on the HOT and how that funds visit Baltimore's annual appropriation?
Right, so there's a, there's a law that, that, a law says, state law says that 40% of the proceeds that are generated by the hotel tax must go to visit Baltimore. And if there's, if there's any adjustments or any money that comes in below or, or above the expected budget, that adjustment gets made in the next fiscal year. And so, yeah, right now, 60% of the hotel revenue goes to us, goes right to the general fund and 40% goes directly to visit Baltimore, whether it's this year or as an adjustment in a future budget.
Thank you. In terms of the Fire Department, you had mentioned the two closures. And I apologize because I think I missed this. Were those, were those two closures realized?
No, they were not. So we had, we had budgeted for two closures. Decision was later made by the prior administration to keep them open until the resolution of the operational study that fires. They have a private consultant that's doing a kind of nuts review of the Fire Department's operations. And so that is not yet complete, it is underway, but not yet complete.
Who commissioned that study?
So that it's Fire Department did with, with the blessing of the prior administration and the consultant is on board.
Who's the consultant?
The, the firm's name is Facets, F-A-C-E-T-S.
And what is the cost of that study?
I don't, I don't know offhand, but we can, we can find out.
Please and thank you. And when do we expect that study to be completed?
So the study is underway. I have, you know, participated in some of the meetings with, with the consultant. I've got an update for you, it's, it's, it's underway, and I would expect within the next couple of months, it should be wrapped up.
Is that study going to be made public?
I believe it will, yes.
Okay. Let's jump over to the police department. I think you mentioned we're looking at a $9.7 million deficit for them?
Right.
And there were three reasons for that, overtime, mounted unit, and the, just, you know, the decision not to, yeah.
Right.
On the overtime piece, what did the city council cut from the budget last year? Was that 7.7 million?
I think it was about nine, I think it was about nine million.
Nine?
Yeah. Nine point, let's see, you can see it on the front page. Yeah, 9.3. So that the, the expenditure side was cut by 9.3 in the general fund.
And what are we, what is our projected, what is the projection right now for overtime deficit for the fiscal year? So what I'm asking is, as of now, what do you think our deficit will, will be by June 30 of 2021 for police overtime?
Yeah, so, so they're, they're running, they have about $2.5 million, we would estimate, and that's because they're running about $100,000 more than budget per pay period, and there's, you know, 26 pay periods a year. So somewhere between two and three million.
Okay. So the, so let's call it 2.5 million, the remaining 7.2 million has to do with the pay freeze and the mounted unit?
Yeah, the mounted unit is only 500,000 of that, and then the rest is the pay freeze.
And the 500,000, if I'm not mistaken, deals with the lease arrangement?
Right, it's the rent for the, for the stables, and there's a few positions that care for the horses. And so those are the only, those are the only costs that we want to remain going forward.
So is the mounted unit going to appear in the budget for fiscal '22?
So it, it will appear in some form, but again, it's just an on-call unit, we're not going to have positions, we're not going to have police officers dedicated to that function full-time. It will just be used as necessary in the time of an emergency for, you know, either a crowd control issue or something of that sort. So the cost will be somewhere in the budget in fiscal '21, I'm sorry, in fiscal '22.
So to be more specific, the city needs to follow through on its commitment as part of that lease agreement. So that means we're going to continue to pay the $500,000 per year to make good on that commitment that we made, correct?
Yes, well, we're, we're planning to keep the animals and some kind of shelter for that, to have them available for those, for those one-time needs.
Okay. Has there been any discussion on BBMR's part about increasing capacity in three specific areas? Code enforcement, parking enforcement, and the special investigations unit within housing? Let me add a, a fourth piece to that. I believe there's a unit within the Department of Finance, the fiscal integrity unit, is that correct?
Yes.
So has there been, so in those four areas, parking enforcement, code enforcement, special investigations unit within housing, and financial integrity unit within finance, has there been any discussion about it, recurring recommendation that I've been making now for five or six years to increase capacity in order to generate new revenue without having to create a new program?
Uh, yes, on the parking.
Is in place to support that, we already, go ahead, Bob.
Oh yeah, so on the, on the parking and the other financial enforcement, yes, we're already doing that. So in last year's budget, we had added some temporary parking enforcement officers. The idea being that, by the way, I'm getting, getting a little bit of feedback, I don't know if others on the call are getting that, that, that sounds better. In, in, we added parking enforcement, part-time parking enforcement officers last year with DOT, so we feel like parking enforcement, we had taken the steps to beef it up because we felt like there was more enforcement that could be done. The issue at the moment is that during the pandemic, there are some laws that we cannot, that we are choosing not to enforce. So exam, for example, what we found is that since street cleaning is not happening or was paused, one of the main enforcement mechanisms was that the enforcement officers would go neighborhood by neighborhood and go through and check the streets, the residential streets, before the, the street sweepers would come through. We've chosen, because the street sweeping is, was paused or has been paused, we did not do any enforcement for that through the beginning of the year. There were also, in the earlier days of the pandemic, we had chosen not to enforce some of the parking restrictions, just because we had more people at home. But we had taken actions before the pandemic to add officers in that, in that unit with the expectation that they would bring in additional, additional revenue. And unfortunately, the circumstances are just beyond, you know, folks' control at this point. On the, the other thing that we have done is, there is, you know, finance has, is working with law and has one dedicated resource now that was following up on what we would call anomalies in self-reported taxes. So, you know, parking taxes would apply there, hotel taxes, beverage container taxes. So we have a, an individual from the law department that is working with finance to go after what we believe are some firms or some companies that have not been compliant with our, our, some of our self-reported taxes, the ones I mentioned. We can, we can share some, you know, information with the committee separately about that. We've gotten a lot of, we've actually recovered millions of dollars from that effort by paying or by charging folks for what we think were back taxes or back fees that were owed, especially on the parking side. So we've been taking, you know, very aggressive action there and actually have a unit in place and an individual from law to assist us with those efforts. And we haven't had any discussions, at least not recently, on the, on the housing side, so we'll need to follow up on that one in particular.
Appreciate the response and, and the work there, Bob. I would point out that we seem to still have a deficit in terms of the number of parking enforcement officers out there, and that as restrictions from COVID-19 continue to be lifted, we're going to see parking enforcement be required to focus on mechanical street sweeping, enforcement of hour restrictions, and also perform that dual traffic management officer role that some of our parking enforcement officers perform. And with 40 RPP areas in the city, we, we are currently at a shortage for enforcement. I don't want to think about what that's going to look like once we, again, start mechanical street sweeping and, and peak hour restrictions and go back to rush hour where we have folks performing TMO functionality. So while I appreciate that work has been done, it seems to me that it's pretty clear that we still have a pretty significant shortage, and this is a missed opportunity to generate more revenue, which is really underscored by, you know, the, the gloomy outlook that you've provided, no offense, but this is, this is not, you know, a terr- positive fiscal outlook. So I think we need to be maximizing every single opportunity to generate more revenue for the city without creating, you know, new taxes or, or financial burdens for residents or businesses.
Right, we, we agree with that.
Okay, I'll look forward to having those conversations as we lead up to the budget process. The last, and colleagues, are there, does anyone have questions? I'm zooming in on my last, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Bob, on the subject of DOT staff, I understand a couple of new engineers have been hired for, at DOT, have we created any of the engineering and planning, planner positions that we've been discussing since I took office?
I will need to check on that, I'm not sure offhand.
Okay, I've raised the issue of increasing the number of engineer and planning positions in DOT since my very first budget hearing, and I've yet to see anything that, that, that shows we're moving in that direction, except for we have, I, my understanding, maybe a couple positions were converted mid-budget cycle this last year or something, but we're still short by a significant number compared to any other metropolitan, you know, location, any other city. We, we just do not have the number of engineering and planning positions that we need in order to develop the designs to rework our city streets to a modern transportation system. And the planners are essential in, in, you know, discussing this, being a part of community conversation about these kind of changes. We really need the engineers to be able to focus on designs, and the planners to be able to work with community. And right now, we have too few engineers, and they end up also being, you know, basically Graham Young ends up being the one and only person that can do this and does this anywhere any change is happening in the entire city, while also having to do designing work. It just doesn't make any sense at all. At the beginning of the pandemic, we saw a significant increase, and again, I was late, I apologize if this has already been raised, we saw a significant increase in the number of ATVES camera tickets at the beginning of the pandemic. I think it was something like a 25% increase in the first couple of months. Did that increased rate of citation from the ATVES cameras sustain over the last year?
So it, it was more of a short time, short-term bump, so we did see in those first couple of months, an increase. We did, we did mention that during the presentation, we have not seen it maintained, so there was a spike in that, in the spring months where we were issuing a lot more citations. And again, our, our, our thinking on that was, and we checked with other jurisdictions in other states to see if they were experiencing similar trends, and they were. It was with less traffic on the roads, more people were speeding, you know, you could get up ahead of steam on some of those highly trafficked corridors, you know, people were going through red lights or turning right on red. So we saw a bump in those citations, but we, we haven't seen it sustained, we've seen it start to kind of drift off now that traffic patterns have, I, I wouldn't say they've gone back to normal, but they've, there's much more traffic on the streets around those rush hour times now than there was in March and, and April.
And at the same time, you know, presumably, as tickets are not just being issued, but also crashes were occurring, crashes continue to occur in the city. And again, I'm going to raise something else that I've been raising for years, and I'm going to hope that we're making some, that, that, that something is being done to actually track and evaluate the cost created through damage to city property from driver crashes. There's a, there's one street light on Parkside Drive that's been replaced three times, from what I can tell, in the last year. There is a fire hydrant at the corner of Parkside and Bel Air that's been replaced three times in six months. It's right next to the bus shelter that the NTA has had to replace full-time over a certain period. This, is there, it's creating some noise here, I'm sorry, is there a mic that could be muted? The city continues to shoulder a significant burden from damage to public property from car crashes, and I think that it's unfair to the public for us to not have a real grasp on just what that cost is in order for us to be able to adequately evaluate whether or not the city is investing commensurately to prevent that damage from continuing to happen. I have some figures here from BGE that I'd be happy to forward you, citing the number of city streetlights that they've had to replace year over year, over the, since 2015. And, you know, in 2019, they cite having replaced 694 streetlights in the city, year to date, or fiscal year to date in 2020, as of December 2nd, when they sent me this, was 402. So that's half of the year, that looks like we're on trajectory to, to have them replacing, you know, 800 streetlights. And they gave me a figure at some point on the cost they charged the city per streetlight. My recollection is that it was somewhere north of $1,100 per streetlight, and that's, I think, just for the fixture. And so we're, you know, we're talking about a significant amount of money just in this streetlight replacement, many, many of which never go recouped for a number of reasons. Because the driver drags away, or is privately towed or something before police are ever called or arrive, and so there's no police report of it. And this is just one item. Streetlights are a common thing, again, fire hydrants getting sheared off left and right, curbs damaged, fences damaged, other city public property, street trees that, that cost us money. There is an immense list of damage that continues to be caused by unsafe.
Councilman?
Yeah.
I hate to interrupt, but I, I think, I think we get the point. Can you, can you clarify as to?
Yeah, I want to know what BBMR is doing to evaluate this problem with various city agencies who own this property, because none of them seems to be able to thread the needle where they say, hey, look, we have just no account for this stuff, because if there's no police report, it never comes to our attention, or even when we do replace this stuff, we don't catalog that in any place. There is no accounting, I have asked every city agency, there is no accounting whatsoever to account for the total cost year over year to replace property that's damaged by driving. I want to know that number, I've been asking for that number for years, I want to know that number.
Bob, are you clear on what the councilman's looking for? Bob? Aaron, I'm going to defer to you, it looks like Bob's having some technical difficulties.
Yes, we can put out an information request to agencies to see what we can solicit and deliver back.
Sorry, I was, yeah.
Thank you.
Just going to add, we don't, we don't have that information, Councilman. We, we do encourage agencies, if there is damage to property, that they go after those people if they can identify them. And so we've, we've always encouraged agencies to do that, including DOT. We don't have the, the information about which poles have been damaged. But my understanding is that if DOT can get that information, that we go after them and charge them or go after their insurance, is my understanding. But my understanding is that if DOT can get that information, that we go after them and charge them or go after their insurance, is my understanding.
Number of people, the number of instances in which they can never gather that. And let me reiterate what I've been reiterating for years, is that I'm not interested in how much we're recouping. I'm interested, interested in the value of the damage. I want to know the total of what we are spending in order to repair the damage. How much are we spending to replace all of the streetlights? How much are we spending to replace all of the fire hydrants? And not just the materials, the labor. What does it cost us to have to own machines just to put up these streetlights because they get knocked down over and over again? I want to know the total public cost of the damage and to, 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 to repair the damage that is just incessant. And, and if, and, and, and I, I can't be the one to chase down and make every single city agency come up with a new way of doing this. It is in the budgetary interests of the city. It is in the public's interest for the budget to have an understanding of this so that we can understand how to better act to correct the course. And so I need the Budget Bureau to come up with these numbers for real. The law department doesn't have them because the law department only has what they can get from police reports. And city agencies can't rely on police reports anymore. So half the time it's because they're not getting them until six months or a year after the incident has taken place. I need BBMR to make these city agencies tell us what they're spending to fix damage created by crashes.
Council Vice President Middleton, I think you had your hand up.
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Colleagues, if there's no other questions. Bob, my, my final question for today. What are we looking at for preliminary revenue shortfalls for fiscal 22?
$30 million. So our, our CLS outlook is our revenues are $30 million short of what it would cost to maintain current services. So we, you know, we'll be discussing that with the mayor and CEO and his team about how we'll correct that balance. Again, I want to emphasize for folks, there's, I'm getting a little feedback, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time. Hearing, you know, just want to emphasize for folks, some of this revenue that we're talking about, it's gone forever. Like we are not turning around parking revenue tomorrow, we are not turning around hotel tax tomorrow. We're seeing declines in our commercial property tax assessments, which is part of the reason we have an issue in fiscal 22. So it's going to look ugly for a long period of time, in, in my judgment. And again, you know, back in March at the beginning of this, I would, I would felt comfortable thinking that, you know, this was a one-time disruption, this is not a one-time disruption. We should be expecting a lot of pain from this for at least a couple, the next couple of years. And again, I don't mean to be pessimistic, you guys have worked with me for, for a while. And though I try to see the bright side of things, but much of this revenue that we've lost, I think, is gone. And there's not much evidence that it's returning. And so for fiscal 22, we're facing another $30 million shortfall on top of the 100 plus that we had to cut out of the 21 budget. So, so that's where we are right now. So it won't be a, a, a very good-looking 22 budget either, frankly.
Thank you, one second. Okay, we are now going into recess, thank you everyone. And we will be circling back for Q3 hearing probably in early May, plus or minus. Thank you all very much, have a good day.
Thank you.